...at the Paramount City Council, can I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Gill. Councilmember Hansel.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Lemmons.
Here. Now we have City Council, public comment updates, do we have any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have two. The first one, and both of them were from the February 6, 2018 council meeting. The first resident that spoke at that time was Ms. Tammy Cagley, and she had public safety concerns in her neighborhood, which was in the 8,000 block of Rosecrans. So just to report back to the council, the Public Safety Department has conducted patrol checks, they provided traffic enforcement overtime, and are in the process of deploying a decoy car, excuse me, along the 8,000 block of Rosecrans Avenue. And our Public Safety Director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, has been in contact with Ms. Cagley to schedule a neighborhood watch meeting as well. So that's going on. The second public comment card that we had from the February 6 meeting was from Mr. Luis Vasquez, and his concern was communication efforts by Metro regarding the planned light rail line through Paramount. As a result, planning staff has definitely reached out to Mr. Vasquez to inform him that the city is advocating for more and better community outreach from Metro. And we had a meeting scheduled with Mr. Vasquez this week, however, he called back to reschedule for next week. So we are definitely meeting with him and explaining to him more about the project, and obviously more about our efforts to get Metro into town to hold more community meetings in regards to this project. And that concludes it.
Thank you. Public comments?
Yes, we do have two. The first one is from Ms. Sandra DeKay, and she'd like to discuss with the council street racing and safety concerns. Ms. DeKay?
Yes. I'm here again tonight to address concerns in my neighborhood on the northeast side of Paramount, the city of Paramount, or as we have come to call this area Paramount's forgotten and orphaned section. The last neighborhood to receive resources and development considerations and law enforcement patrols. Lately, we have seen a resurgence of street racing in the area, especially on the streets between Paramount Boulevard, Century Boulevard, Anderson Street, Century to Merkel Street, and down Merkel to the 105 freeway, right in front of Roosevelt School. I and neighbors repeatedly call to report the speeding on our streets to no avail. Community, commonly, the speeding starts in the afternoon and goes through the evening time, and on the weekends, it goes on all night long. Enough. We want more patrols of our streets in this area. The so-called speed pump on Powell Street, between Anderson and Century Boulevard, doesn't, it's just a small lift, and doesn't slow these streets' speeders down in the least. While other streets have more pronounced and effective speed bumps, sometime, something needs to be done before someone gets hurt or worse pill. This council should drive down the streets in the neighborhood in my area and note all the speed marks, drifting donuts, and circles made by these speeders. Summer is coming, which means more kids, and unfortunately, more street racing down these streets. How about more speed bumps? How about on Anderson Street, or on Powell Street, between Anderson and Paramount Boulevard, and more police patrols? And by the way, thank you Peggy Lemmons and Diane Martinez for putting out that wonderful video, the hypocrites. You really got, you guys really did.
Mr. DeKay, you may not sit there and disparage the council, okay?
Well, you shouldn't have made that video saying that you were doing issues.
You may not disparage the council, you can speak to us about an issue, you can't call anybody out. Are you finished with your comments regarding your safety issues?
Well, I take umbrage to the fact that you did a video saying that we, on issues that we brought to your attention.
You may not make disparaging comments towards the council, if you'll take your seat, please. Thank you. Is there another speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the next one is from Ms. Tammy Cagley. And she wants to speak on item number three. Ms. Cagley, we'll go ahead and call you up at that time?
Are those the only two cards? Okay, so we're going to move to the Clean Power Alliance.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, as you know, we are now part of a program called the Clean Power Alliance. The program allows our residents and businesses the option to choose how and from whom their power is generated from. The program also helps our community be more environmentally friendly, and that we will offer renewable energy at a cost that is expected to be lower than that of Edison. The program will be offered to our residents and businesses towards the end of this year, however, tonight, we're asking the council for approval on the level of renewable energy that will be available to Paramount residents and businesses who decide to enroll into this program. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Christopher Cash, to handle the item. Chris?
Thank you, John, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you might recall, back in December, the city joined the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Authority. Last month, the authority actually changed its name and is now known as Clean Power Alliance, or CPA. And this is because many of the new members of CPA are outside of the Los Angeles area proper, and they wanted a name that indicated a broader geographic area. Currently, there are actually 25 cities who are members of the authority, as well as two counties, Los Angeles and Ventura. As we discussed when we joined LACE, or CPA as it's now known, that this agency is what is known as a Community Choice Aggregation Program, that provides energy commodities to residents and businesses and invest their own utilities, which in our case is Edison. CCAs have two main reasons to exist. One is to provide lower-cost energy, and two, energy that is generated with renewable Since we joined back in December, CPA has been in the process of getting all of their business needs established. CPA would still be classified as a startup public agency to the extent that the board is still expanding, new members are coming onboard monthly. CPA hired its first executive director last month, and they will be working on staffing for the agency over the coming months. As with any public agency, there are a number of policies and procedures that may put in place, which the board is currently establishing. And most importantly, CPA's main mission is providing lower-cost renewable energy. They are in the process of procuring their first energy contracts. Again, just to remind you, CPA has established a phased rollout of its services, with the city's planning, planned to come online in the fourth quarter of this year. As part of the actions that CPA is requesting of its member agencies, they are asking that each individual member agency set the default renewable energy tier for their commodity, community. The tiers are either 36% renewable, which matches the current baseline Edison plan, 50% renewable, or 100% renewable. The default tier would be the energy product into which residents and businesses will automatically be enrolled. Customers, depending on the default energy tier selected, will though individually have the option to either opt up, or opt down from the default tier. And as we discussed, they also can opt out of CPA services if they wish to continue having their energy commodity provided by Edison. In front of you is a chart showing the possible percentage of renewable energy that will be provided by CPA, either 36%, 50%, or 100%. The middle column is the net bill discount projected from a basic Edison power plan, which includes 36% renewable energy. The third column is then the discount of the same percentage of renewable energy provided by Edison versus CPA. And just so you're aware, as an Edison customer, there is an option to pay for higher levels of renewable energy that would match the renewable energy tiers that CPA is offering. However, as we see in the third column, it is at a much higher cost. So if you're looking at the 36% renewable, that would be at about a 4% discount from the net standard Edison plan, and would also, again, because it matches the Edison current percentage of renewable energy that is provided by Edison, it again would be 4% less in costs through CPA. If we were to go to the 50% tier, it's about a 3% savings from, again, the standard Edison plan, and then if you were to look at the 50% renewable plan that's offered by Edison, it's actually a 12% cost savings. Looking at 100% renewable energy, under the CPA projected rates, it will actually cost you 7% more than the standard 36% renewable rate that Edison offers as part of their baseline plan. However, if you were to use Edison's 100% renewable plan, it's 10% cheaper than what Edison provides. Are there any questions on that? Because I just want to make sure before we move on.
Are we coming in at the 36% renewable?
That's part of the decision today as to what tier would be the default. In considering the default energy, there are a couple of things to keep in mind. First, the California Public Utilities Commission has required that Edison continuously expand the level of renewable energy used. Edison currently is at a minimum of 36% renewable, which again is part of what you would get in sort of that baseline Edison package. Over time, Edison will be required to renew that percentage, and as a policy, CPA has indicated that they are committed to staying just slightly greener at the bottom end of their renewable packages than Edison. So if the 36% renewable tier were to be selected, it should be noted that there will be less stability in that rate. And the reason being is that in order to stay slightly ahead of Edison, as Edison progressively increases their baseline amount of renewable energy, CPA members would also have to continually adjust their minimum tier. And as a result, there will be more changes required to keep up with that rate, and to stay slightly, a little bit greener than what Edison currently offers. It would also result in more changes year to year in individual bills, as that percentage of renewable energy ratchets up. If we were to select a 50% or 100% rate, that will allow for a greater buffer between the minimum rate, and will also result in greater rate stability. At some point in the future, years away, Edison will have a baseline renewable energy percentage of 50%, which at that point, we may wish to change the default tier. However, in the interim, a selection of 50% or 100% default renewable tiers will have greater stability, and will not require annual action in the short term. When Paramount joined CPA, we did so on the basis of two reasons. One, the ability to provide residents and businesses a better source of clean, green renewable energy. And two, to provide opportunities for lower-cost energy commodities. So given those reasons, when we assess the possible default tiers, the 50% tier is the only tier that actually increases the amount of renewable energy used in Paramount, and also provides a net bill discount. In this case, it would provide 14% more renewable energy than Edison currently provides, and it would have a projected 3% net bill discount from Edison's standard plan. If we were to look at the 36% tier, while the savings is greater, 4%, it is not greener than the current standard Edison renewable energy percentage. And at the 100% tier, while certainly much greener than Edison's current 36%, it would also likely cost 7% more in terms of the comparison of rates versus the standard plan that's currently offered by Edison. So therefore, based on those reasonings, we are recommending that the council approve the selection of the 50% default energy tier for Paramount residents and business customers who would be participating in the Clean Power Alliance services. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cash, are there questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You could opt up from the 50%, you could go to the 100, or you could opt down to the 36%. Could you not also opt out of the plan totally? I think, I don't remember if you say that.
Yes, you can do all of those things.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
This, basically setting this default tier is basically what would be set if no action was taken by the customer.
Right. And is there a time limit, or a time window, that people would have a choice of that? Is it like once a year, or once every six months, or do we know that yet?
Well, in terms of setting the default, CPA has indicated that they like agencies to do that at least only once a year. The individual customer.
The individual customer is what I'm talking about.
The individual customer can move at any point.
At any point, okay.
Anyone else?
Motion made.
Move by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gill. Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. We're going to move on to item two, which is urgency ordinance number 1099, and ordinance number 1100.
Yes, Madam Mayor, councils, excuse me, council members. Our local cable TV provider, Spectrum, has recently renewed their franchise agreement with the state of California to offer service to the Paramount community. Again, with the deregulation that happened a little over 10 years ago of the cable TV market, this is something that we, the city, do not control. The state has total control over this contract. However, as part of the franchise with Spectrum, the state requires the cable company to offer cities to collect a fee and provide this fund to the cities that they serve. But before they do this, cities need to adopt this ordinance that's before you tonight, which authorizes the collection of this fee. So today, we're asking for approval of this ordinance, which would allow Spectrum to collect the fee, and our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chung, will handle the item. Kevin?
Thank you, John. And good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. And I'll try to be brief with this presentation. On this slide in front of you, there's a lot of information, but suffice it to say that in 2006, the state took over the franchising of cable services companies from local government. However, in exchange for use of public rights of way, cable companies were still required to provide public, educational, and government, or PEG fees and channels to cities in support of public video programming. The PEG fees are based on a 1% of gross revenues from cable companies, and must be authorized by local ordinance. As you know, the city is using funding from PEG fees to purchase video recording equipment in order to broadcast and archive city council meetings. The city only has one cable service, services provider, most commonly known as Spectrum. The franchise with Spectrum expired last year, and was renewed in January of this year. With the renewal, state law requires that the city also re-adopt an ordinance to receive the PEG fees. Once the ordinance is in place, the city will be able to collect PEG fees from Spectrum and any other future cable company that operates in Paramount. And the city currently receives about $35,000 in PEG fees annually from Spectrum. And as it was explained in the report, because Spectrum has asked that the city re-adopt its PEG fee ordinance by the end of this month, both an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance are before you tonight for your consideration. The urgency ordinance authorizes the PEG fees immediately, while the regular ordinance allows for the typical process of first and second readings before adoption. So with that, we request your approval of urgency ordinance 1099, and ordinance 1100, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
Motion to approve, urgency ordinance number 1099.
Okay, I have a motion from Martinez, and a second one from Gill. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gill. Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. Anyone motion on the second at the same time?
Motion to approve ordinance number 1100.
Second.
Moved by Martinez, seconded by Hansel. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gill. Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes.
We're going to move on to item three, Resolution 18001.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. There exists a committee made up of resident, representatives, excuse me, from the air quality districts throughout the state of California. The committee is actually called the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee. This statewide committee has grant funds available to local governments for a specific purpose of expanding electric vehicle infrastructure in the South Coast Basin, which we are a part of. So this next item involves our application to this committee to request grant funds to establish electric vehicle charging stations in specific areas throughout Paramount, and our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chung, will handle the item. Kevin?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, council members. This item is to authorize staff to apply for grant funding through the Mobile Source Air Pollution Reduction Committee, or MSRC, program that's called the Local Government Partnership Grant. The grant funding is from vehicle registration fees and supports AQMD air quality goals by promoting the use of more electric vehicles on California roads. Over $72,000 is available to the city for this purpose. Specifically, the grant will promote expanded use of electric vehicles by funding electric vehicle charging stations, also known as electric vehicle supply equipment, or EVSEs. The grant funding can be used for 50% of the cost for EVSEs on private property, and 75% of the cost for EVSEs on public property. Staff is working with MSRC in developing an EVSE project implementation plan. The goal is to use the funding for six of these electric vehicle charging stations in Paramount, including two on public property, one here at City Hall, and one at the sheriff's substation. Also, we'll be working with private property owners for the installation of four other EVSEs at various locations throughout the city. Charging stations are certainly needed here in Paramount. As to our knowledge, there are only, there is only one EVSE located in the city at Carlton Forge Works. It's a private station that's available to Carlton employees and for charging company vehicles. MSRC cites as a major reason for consumer preference for traditional vehicles over electric vehicles thus far is the lack of a widespread network of charging stations. This grant program will help to expand this network in Paramount and in other cities, and make charging easier for those already with an electric vehicle, or others potentially in the market for one. And beyond the MSRC and AQMD air quality objectives, establishing a local network of EVSEs in Paramount will help the city accomplish its goal of becoming an environmentally sustainable community. So with that, staff recommends your approval of this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. It's my understanding, too, that the ones that are going to be put on public property would be free for use, and the ones on private property, they could be a fee associated with that. Is that correct?
That's generally correct on public property. They will be made available to the public for free. On private property, I think there could be an option for charging.
Yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, to pay for charging.
Questions?
We do have a speaker's card on the side.
Okay, are there any questions? No this time? Okay, let's hear from the speaker.
Ms. Tammy Cagley?
I think most of my questions were answered in the presentation. I'm really excited that you guys are applying for this grant through AQMD to bring the charging stations to Paramount. That is a great step towards, you know, bringing this into the next century, because that is definitely something that we need to do, because, you know, to help the environment. That is a big step. The basic questions that I had was, where were you putting the charging stations? I understood that you were going to put them, put one here and one at the substation. And I was trying to figure out where were you going to put the next ones, so that I know that's to be decided. And I understood that the only one that we have currently is the one at Carlton Forge. So I'm looking forward as to where you're going to decide the next ones are going to I think that is basically it, because those were my questions, where are the next ones going to be located? What are the steps for the public to apply for them, once you get the funding for them? And what are the steps going to be for, basically, the public ones, the commercial ones, and I guess the general ones, for public and commercial use? And that's it? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, are there any of those questions that you can answer at this time?
Sure. First, for clarification purposes, the public won't be applying for these charging stations. That's what we're doing through this grant. We're applying for the funding so that these can be placed at certain private locations. In terms of those locations, we're looking to have discussions with private property owners first, before, you know, announcing where they may or may not go, because we're not sure whether or not we will get buy-in from those property owners. But, you know, we are looking for areas where, you know, there's a lot of, where the public goes a lot, commercial retail centers, for example, would be a high, a choice, a good choice for something like that. So, you know, we have a couple properties that we are targeting, but we haven't had those discussions with them as of yet.
It was particularly good to read in the report, too, that the charging on these, because we have one at home, and it takes all night long to charge, and they said it'll only take a couple hours.
Yeah, there are various types of units that are available, and of course, they come at a different cost. But there are those that, you know, will take, you know, all night to get a full charge, and then there are others that are, you know, more expensive, but you could get nearly a full charge in, you know, a few hours.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, just one for my own benefit. Say at the substation, how many vehicles would be able to be charging at one time? Do we have any idea on that at this point?
Yeah, my understanding, and Public Works can correct if I'm wrong here, but for each unit that's installed, two cars can be charged.
That's pretty standard, yeah. I also think, too, this falls in line, when we attended the disadvantaged communities conference, and there was the presentation from the young man that just opened the company. They're going to be approaching businesses to put an electrical vehicle on site for all the employees to use, to run errands and stuff, to take cars off the street. So they'll charge the company so much per month, but then they'll supply the vehicle to all their employees for free. So that would fall right in line with that, if we're able to get those two programs maybe working together. Are there other questions?
I think we should move, approve the item.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, and I think Hansel had a little edge there.
Whichever.
Seconded by Hansel. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gill. Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to Resolution number 18002.
Thank you. Around this time of year, we take a look at how we are doing with our budget, and seek your approval to make adjustments to our financial plan. We also look at how the revenue predictions that we made back in June of last year line up with the current state of affair. So this helps us to make these adjustments I talked about necessary to maintain the city, and also to add some things to the budget that may have gone overlooked when we first proposed the budget to you. So as you know, this process is called a mid-year budget review, and it's actually looking pretty good. So with that, I'll hand it over to our Finance Director, Ms. Karina Lamb, and she'll handle the item. Karina?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, and members of the council, the item before you is a fiscal year 18's mid-year budget. A few months have gone by since we adopted the budget in June. This is a quick review. We do that every year to check how we're doing now as compared to the estimates we made a few months ago in the budget. This is to make sure we are still on track, and to make any adjustments necessary at this time. This is a recap of our city finances in three major fund categories. First is a general fund. This is a fund the council has the most discretion in spending. This fund is unrestricted. It is used to pay for most of the city's essential city services, including our lease, sheriff's contracts, maintenance and operation in public works, even special events handled by recreation departments. At this time, the fund is looking better, as John has mentioned. Revenues are projecting further growth, and we are able to add some necessary expenditures in a year. In addition, we're able to PSERF the CIP reserve fund by about $200,000. And for the first time, we're able to program that into the budget by adding additional $90,000 into the overall CIP reserve fund. We usually do that when we close our books at the end of the year, when we have a surplus. But at this time, we're recommending to program that in the budget. As you know, since the dissolution of we- As you know, since the dissolution of redevelopment agency, we have been hit very hard losing about $5 to $6 million a year. For the city, the loss of redevelopment agency is actually a lot worse than a recession that was hit a few years ago. I know that we talk about this many times in the past few years. Really, in the past, we would use the $5 to $6 million in infrastructure improvements, including building a new water well. So we are conscientious that we no longer have this capital funding and that we are trying to come up with ways to replenish this funding source incrementally. At this time, not only we are not using any CIP reserve for capital projects in this year, we're adding to the overall balance. And still, with all these adjustments, we are proposing a balanced budget for the general fund and end the year with about $0.6 million total. In a restricted funds category, it includes funds such as gas tax, store after-school program, and MTA transportation funds or CDBG funds. As its name stated, the fund has restriction. We can only use it for specific projects. Our practice is that usually we save up and we use it for eligible projects. So it is not uncommon when you see a deficit. This $1.6 million deficit in fiscal year represents we saved money from prior years and we just use it for eligible projects this year. So, in other words, it's just timing difference. Lastly, the water fund, we're proposing a balanced budget. The primary source of our income for the general fund is sales tax, which is about 1/3 of our total general fund. In fiscal year 18, we're proposing about $7.8 million in sales tax, which is an increase from 2017 to actual, also from our original budget estimates. As we heavily rely on fuels, the increase in sales tax here is mainly related to the increase in fuel prices. Also reflects the retail establishments that opened in recent months. As a director, I'm often asked, we have such a big manufacturing and industrial presence in the city. We have such a large population in town. We must get a lot of sales tax. The fact of the matter is, we have a steady amount, but probably we could get as much better than what we have here. As you know, many of the businesses in town, they do not generate sales tax. How we can get sales taxes by point of sales. If you shop at a, buy grocery at a, not grocery, buy merchandise at a store, grocery is tax-free. If you get hot food at a restaurant, sandwich is not taxable. But if you get served hot food at a restaurant, it will be taxable. So when you spend 9.5% of your dollars on sales tax, city get 1%. So it is clear that sales tax is volatile. You can see from these 10-year charts. We got hit real hard when we went through the recession. In 2010, we got dropped to $6 million. The good news is, we have seen sales tax rebound. We're currently at 7.8%, which is close to the top amount in 2013. We are really hopeful that the trend will continue to go up with all the campaign that we're going in. We're hoping the sales tax will go up. Next is our utility users' tax. Utility users' tax is also part of the general fund. Here's the trend for the last 10 years. As you can see, MOP helped bring in additional funding since 2016. This allows us to cover some of the lost funding from the recession and also the loss of redevelopment agency. Due to the energy credits issued by Addison last year, along with refunds and exemptions, utility users' tax revenues have adjusted downwards since last year. At this time, we're once again lowering down numbers reflect the actuals. Nonetheless, $3.6 million revenue is due at a very good level for the general fund. Here is a review of our revenues comparing numbers at approved and mid-year. The red bars show the original estimates at approved, and the yellow bars represent our revised numbers. For the general fund, there's overall increase of about $450,000 for the year to close to $26 million. Other than sales tax increase, we also see increase in construction permits and MVLF when compared to approved. For the restricted funds, there were some increases in various grants, including CDBG, store after-school program, and other sources as well, to a total of $10.5 million. And for the water fund, we see the water consumption has been stabilized, and we're projecting the same revenues at this time, about $7.8 million. Here is the expenditure comparison for the three fund types between approved and mid-year. For the general fund, we budgeted close to $25.5 million at approved. Same as previous year, we're experiencing some personnel vacancy across all departments. We're now adding some proposed increases in expenditures. So at this time, the total general fund expenditure is budgeted at $25.8 million, which is about $340,000 increase more than approved. The increase will be highlighted in the following two slides. As for the restricted funds, we are budgeting about $12 million in the year. The increase in expenditure mainly reflects the actuals for the store after-school program, some CDBG funded activities, and other capital improvement projects. As for water fund, there were a few emergency call-outs we are budgeting at this time. So the total is about $8 million, you know, a year. Among the $340,000 increase in expenditures, a number of them have been approved and presented to you at public meetings. Here are the other highlights that we have for items that are reflected in the budget. Includes increases. First one is the education Boulevard banners. We are planning to honor top 25 grade grades this year on Alontra Boulevard. As mentioned at the budget adoption in June, once the soccer and softball leagues, they formed and up in mourning, and if they eligible for field allocation, we will return to the council to allocate funding for them as well. The funding is about $20,000. Next is election services. We're allocating additional funding of $14,900, also $62,700 for city attorney's office. There were a few other items related to studies such as a fee study, a grant research, and economic development. They are all now added as well. Also included is $71,000 in public works for unanticipated repairs. In public safety, there is an overall increase in services for $14,000. Also, there may be a potential litigation. We have budgeted $50,000 there as well. There were a couple other items we want to bring to your attention. One is a vehicle replacement that will be purchased by Public Safety. This is an item that they budgeted last year, but it didn't purchase, so it carry over this year. Another item I wanted to highlight is the minimum wage requirement. As you know, since January 2017, we now have to comply with an aggressive wage law started with $10.50 per hour last year to increase to $15 an hour by 2022. This is a 50% increase in pay in five years. This year, we have slightly adjusted our salary table to comply, and the impact is minimal. However, we can see that down the line, the financial impact will be a lot more as the increase is 50% over a period of five years. As you know, we're always looking for ways to streamline our operations, to consolidate our staffing, and to outsource. We continue to do that. We were also hopeful that the class and comp study we're currently in will provide us some insight as to how to deal with that and help us brainstorm our future budget preparations. And we hope to have a comprehensive approach when we deal with this dramatic wage increase in coming years. This chart shows us the beginning and ending balance of each fund category. If we fast forward at the end of the year, our fund balance for our general fund remains at $12.7 million, which represent close to 50% of our operating budgets. As for restricted funds and water funds, we expect the balance to be about $6 million and $4 million respectively. Now that we're done with the financials, we are switching gears to look at some fiscal improvements. One significant project we're adding is the resurfacing of the ice pond. As you know, the pond was built about 20 years ago, and it remains one of the most popular and most visited areas in town. It is in real need of a facelift. So the picture on the left shows you the existing condition, and we intend to resurface it to the one similar to on the right. The cost is about $210,000 and is fully funded by the art fund. Next is the city council chamber. We are planning to upgrade the AV system and the dais up here. The total cost about $265,000. It is fully funded by the public pig fund. The improvement includes equipment upgrade, reconfiguration of the dais, and improve the ADA accessibility, and also to accommodate public meeting recording. Lastly, is the parkway entry signs. We are planning to install two signs at the north and south city entrances on Downey Avenue to cost about $32,500. This concludes my report for the mid-year budget. It's recommended the council read by title only. And dog resolution 18002, approving the mid-year 18, fiscal year 18 mid-year budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Karina. Are there questions? Now I'll enter Tina motion.
Second?
Second, I'll make the motion.
Moved by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer, roll call please.
Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Levens?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have comments and committee reports from council members. Anything from you, Councilmember Ginn? Councilmember Hanson?
Yes, I would say that we attended, or I did anyway, the opening and ribbon cutting of the dog park a little more than a week and a half ago or so, which is actually in Southgate. But we helped put in some of the equipment, fund some of the equipment, so on and so forth. There were quite a few people there. The dogs seemed to be having a really great time running around. And Southgate definitely appreciated our help on that. Also, at the training with the sheriffs at Salute Park, was there too, and we were a little late for that because they were both at the same time. But there were quite a few people at that too, running and walking and so on and so forth. And doubt new calisthetics on the field with the sheriffs. So we appreciate all of that too.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Martinez?
I also attended the opening of our new dog park. And it was nice to join efforts with our neighboring city with our beautiful dog park. A lot of cute puppies out there.
I too was at the dog park and I was at the Salute Park. And you very well attended and very nice to attend. And we're just glad that City Southgate took the stand and were able to work with them on this dog park. And I think everybody in the community is going to have a nice place to take a dog.
I was at both of the events too, and they both did go really well. The exercise equipment, I think, is a really nice thing at the dog park. Not a lot of them have that. So people were really enjoying that, which was our contribution to the event. It's also right behind Hollydale School, so it's right on the border of Paramount and Southgate. Literally Paramount residents were walking across the street, which made it really convenient for them. One of the things I was most excited about is I met last week with representatives from GRID. They have grant money to install solar roofs within the city of Paramount, and they said that they can do up to 60 to 100 of those for our residents. And I think quite a few of our residents are going to be eligible for that. So we're working closely with them to be able to give the information out there so that people can take advantage of it, as opposed to some of the other communities that are near. I think they said they've done over 100 in Long Beach and something like 40 or 50 in the city of Downey. So we certainly need to take advantage of this. And I think it's a matter of getting the information out in another way to our residents. They did appear once at Progress Park, but they said the attendance was really low, and they've only done two installations. So if anybody in the audience is interested in the program, when we put it out, we do have the rates of what you need to qualify for. The installation is 100% free. There's no cost to the resident whatsoever, as long as you meet the financial qualifications. And we're going to be getting that information out to them more after we work out the liability issues between the two entities and us helping them to promote that. But the city staff already has the information and can certainly hook you up with GRID if you're interested. And it's quite a cost savings on energy. Staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a reminder to adjourn to Progress Park for our next meeting. We will be vacating the chambers, so for those of you that do come to the council meetings regularly, please note that we will be at Progress Park Plaza for a meeting on March the 6th at 6:00 PM, while the council chambers is under construction.
Did you say March 6th? Because my note here says March 5th.
I'm looking at our city clerk. Sixth or fifth? Six, thank you.
Because we're starting the construction in the chambers.
Yes, we are starting the constructions, and so we'll move back in here. I'm looking at it because hopefully April, May. Yeah, yeah, mid-April, early May with new screens, new audio visual, and a camera in the back.
Perfect. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.